Good evening and welcome once again to Straight From The Sky. I'm your talk show host, Bobit Avila, and tonight we have a very special guest in the person of the Chief Implementor or Deputy Chief Implementor for the Inter-Agency Task Force or Emergency Operations Center of the IATF. His name is our good friend Deputy Chief Implementor, Councillor Joel Garganera. Yes, I supported him during the last election and I'm not ashamed to say it to you because like I said, I know who are the right persons to be in City Hall right now. And tanawagibutang siya as Deputy Chief Implementor of IATF and I will be asking him tough questions like, "Ngano ni-reduos mantakarong panahon na? Ngah, grabe maganik si buo na abot na mantak world record as far as the lockdown is concerned." So it's really a fortunate time for me to finally have Joel Garganera on my show and he was supposed to be here during the campaign period and we'll be back with Joel after this break. Please don't go away. Thank you for staying with us. It's really a great honor and a pleasure to have with us Chief Implementor of the IATF in Cebu City and in the person of Councillor Joel Garganera. So really a pleasure for me to have him tonight on our show and we will be asking him many questions because of his particular role. And yes, before we go to that, we will be asking him, maybe he should give us a background of how things has been happening in the city council of Cebu.
Yeah, hi. Good evening, sir Bobit. Well, we started in the City Council when we appropriated funds for the operation of the COVID pandemic. And then way back then, sometime in May, April, that was when, you know, we tried to formulate ways on how to address it. We don't have manual for this.
Hmm, yes, true.
There are a lot of unknowns then, so we don't know who are, who are we fighting for. And right there, we were able to establish the first barangay isolation centers because we firmly believe that we need an isolation center. And that's one thing also that happened. The first barangay in barangay lose in Sitios Apatera, when there was a failure then, there was no urgency then. So we allowed the virus to transmit then. So from there, to make the long story short, we were able to make around 52 barangay isolation centers all over the city, which has a capacity of 3,000. And not only that, that is the first level, that is for the asymptomatic and for the second level, for the symptomatic, bayanihan of course through the OPAV, also built-in bayanihan and then we have also the IEC and Cebu City Quarantine Center. So in other words, Cebu City was really, infrastructure-wise, we're very much prepared for the asymptomatic and the symptomatic and we all know the best hospitals are also in the city. But then again, the Emergency Operations Center, way back then, we only have five teams for our contact tracing area and, you know, we were not able to anticipate that the human resource, us the frontliners, including me, got the virus. So on the end part of May, that is when things really start to spike, the cases start to spike because even there was a time that we don't even have drivers to drive our ambulances because more than half of our QRT response team got the virus. And that is when, when we entered June and then June, they tried to, we experienced that we downgraded to GCQ at the time. So of the 673 deaths, the total from the beginning up to now, 370 was for the month of June. So right now, when IATF General Feliciano arrived together with his wife Mia and that is when things start to focus on how to go about it. So first order of the day then was to increase the number of contact tracing. From five teams, we are to 115 teams. So we're talking here about more than 400 people. And these are mainly from the City Health Department and also our police. Our police, our PNP and our Bureau Fire really has a big role and most of the police who volunteered for the contact tracing team were survivor, COVID survivor themselves and then we tapped them because of their cognitive skills in the investigation. And I would say we have one of the best contact tracing team here
Really?
in the Philippines. Yeah. Because of, it's fast, it's fast and if you could see the records, the data that we are having right now our contact tracing team were able to really act fast that the transmission in the household was really low already because we were able to extract right away the positive patient and we were able to lock down the household right away and contact trace and swab the other members of the household. So that's how fast we are, that's how fast we are.
It's a learning curve that you have apparently learned very quickly.
Yeah, but you know, I was also a victim. I was also survivor myself.
Yeah, you have been a COVID, a victim of COVID-19.
Yeah, and then to me, sir Bobit, COVID has a face. COVID, you know, I got COVID, my wife got COVID. We were isolated for 35 days. My wife was hospitalized for 10 days. She got pneumonia. At the back of my house, 16 got COVID. I locked down around six houses then and then two of them died. They are my close family friends. In my staff, in the office at City Hall, four of my staff got COVID and my other staff, his wife got COVID. They were both hospitalized and my other staff, and the entire family got COVID and his father died with COVID. And my seatmate in the City Council, your good friend, former Congressman Tony Quenco, died of COVID.
Died of COVID, yeah.
And then to me, COVID has a face and the face is death. So what we're doing there right now, you will see me personally, I don't want you to experience what we've been through and there's a chance, there's a way of doing it. So we're doing our best here there at EOC, of course with the support of the Sangguyan Pang lungsod and the City Mayor's Office. So we're doing good so far, so far.
Well, it is a, what you call, a lot of negatives coming from the IATF supposed to be, or especially from social media, saying that the Duterte administration failed and I don't believe in it because nobody has really the manual on how to handle the COVID and you're learning it so quickly under being a deputy implementor. For me, it's a very golden opportunity for you because we in Cebu are lucky to have a person like you.
Actually, it's that, you know, the entire Emergency Operations Center, you know, our EOC is data-driven and since this is something to do with medical, we have around 10 medical doctors there during our daily haddol and then we are guided by medical experts. One is your good friend also, Brian Lim.
Yes.
And he's also been helping us in formulating strategies on how to go about it, from LSI to APOR to senior citizens, groceries. So right now, we are very proactive, we are very proactive. We're not just limited to getting the line list for positive because of our swabbers, which is a product also of our contact tracing. But we also have our own cluster clinics wherein those who manifest symptoms, they can go there and it is up to the doctor upon his clinical assessment if he will be swabbed. And then right there and then lock down na yun ang balay and then provision from the city course through the barangay will be given, will be provided to the household so that they will not entertain of going out of the house and the barangay and mind you, sir, the barangay are really on the forefront here. The barangay has a very big contribution to the success as it is right now. Well, for the last six days, the last five days, we're enjoying single digit. We're enjoying single digit. In fact, yesterday was a record-breaking for, for Cebu City.
Lima rako, no?
Yeah, four.
Oh, four.
The other day was three. In fact, the other day was three, but the four yesterday because we have around 780 tests, almost 800 that was tested and then that's around 1.5 positivity rate. But the other day, when we have only have three positive, we get a 0.7, that was a record, that was a record.
Correct, correct.
That was a record 0.7% positivity rate. So that's good, no? It's good. People are cooperating. Well, well, there are some, there are some really when you go out that they are not really practicing the four commandments. But as it is right now, we're being proactive. We've been meeting the different sectors from groceries, from public markets, from construction workers, construction site, the different government offices. So we're on that direction. As it is right now, sir, it's the second day for our surveillance, community surveillance, which we conducted at Carbon Market. We have a target around 2,000 vendors so that we will really know if COVID is there. So the policy right now is of EOC is...
Be ahead of everybody.
Yes, we should hunt.
Yeah.
We should hunt, locate and chase COVID.
Yeah. That's a very positive way because no government is really doing in that, going in that direction. And really, it's an honor and for me and a pleasure to know that the guy behind all of this is our good friend Joel Garganera. And yes, we'll be back with him after this break. Please don't go away. Thank you for staying with us. We're back with our good friend, Councillor Joel Garganera. And yes, I will have to continue with the first episode that we, I asked you something. Maybe you should also explain to us here, "Unzay mo first year as a councillor?"
Well, I got, my road to being a councillor was really tough. I ran three in a row. I didn't make it. I consistently ranked number nine in the RBO.
Namang goy kontra nemo.
Because I was up against a very powerful party by your good friend.
Yeah.
And then, you know, somehow it teaches me how to be where I am right now. And then when I won last 2016, I was number eight. I was number eight.
Better than nine.
Better than nine. And then thinking also, because your friend was also at the helm of City Government at the time for three years. So I was thinking like, I'm gonna make good because of what I did in my first term, which is I was able to close down a landfill at the time. I was up against the mayor and then it reached all the way, the writ of Kalikasan, it reached all the way to Supreme Court and it was a landmark case. And then all the justices affixed their signatures. It was a unanimous environmental landmark case.
That's the same Supreme Court that allowed the clean-up of Manlabe.
That's the same Supreme Court. Yeah, you're right.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, of course, of course. And then, and then when I ran, you know the result. I didn't make it. I was 10. I was 10. And then there were two of those that run are not eligible and they were disqualified. So that's what makes me number eight again to my original position. So it was really tough, it was really tough. Right now, I'm serving on my second term and we got the virus, the pandemic. So it's really tough, it's really tough. And right now, I was assigned at the helm of the Emergency Operations Center and I have, by the way, the full backing of the Cebu City Council. And this is one issue where we cross party lines. And in fact, yesterday, I was really, the other day during the last session, we were really very much overwhelmed with our, with my colleagues in the City Council, especially from the opposite camp. And they were really, they really acknowledged what we did. And actually, to me, sir, it was really a collective effort.
That's the beauty of City Hall right now. Ako saludo ko even with the BOPK members who are what you call love Cebu more than their political party.
In fact, they're being, when we try to, when they try to check and balance the whatever legislation we pass, I learn a lot from them too. And when it comes to COVID, we akazon, we akazon.
Because no one has the, as I said, no one has the template
Precisely.
or experience
You're right.
in solving this problem and you have to solve it together.
Yeah, every day is a learning, is a learning process.
Correct, correct.
And every day is, you know, is a progress.
Nabi ng na, himo't ang world record sa lockdown. I wrote that column.
Yeah, yeah, I read it.
I was the one who wrote that column and I was not ashamed. Na Cebu City has earned its world, what you call, being a world
Record.
Record.
For the longest lockdown.
For the longest lockdown in a city, in the world.
You're right, you're right.
Yeah, but like it or not, Taktong atong Duterte ba, when he said, kahikong mga tagusog mo, momo'ton tay mga, when President Duterte mentioned about it, that there was that morag sinulog barangay, kwan sa south.
In Basak, San Nicolas.
Basak, San Nicolas, yeah. They were having a sinulog parade.
Early dawn, yeah.
Then, waw sila mag-mast, waw sila mag-social distancing and then, you know, kani bitang tagasugbo nga, maingon lang, daghan kay social media nag-ingon, ako gay kugo. Actually, tinuor eh, si Duterte bisaya, man sa nandako, kibaw siya sa atong batasan.
Tinuod.
Niya, kitang tagasugbo, nakakatoon na sa tanga, kenera bang COVID, way pili. It doesn't matter if you're rich or poor. In fact, one of the richest persons that I know na unag kamatay sa COVID is my good friend Dennis Garcia, formerly of Bisign Electric Company. Niya, sa anta man, kesa may motuo, niya, matutakos haya, di masaku patuon.
Di pwede.
Kaya kung sa haya, kay rich man, na dengkuan.
cremate.
Ah, cremate, no? So it's not a joke anymore. So ang kaling, when I interviewed actually Governor Artur Yapu Bohol, niya siya mobo medire sa Bohol and I would like to believe kay atong radio madungo, biya gikan, gikan sugbo, madungo, biya Bohol.
Claro kayo.
So not only that, ang kaling atong radio program, mga commentators, grabe kay mukuan ba about Cebu. Nak, sin, taga Bohol makasabot na kung patuol na ta, di opposite, kung sa kibuhat sa sugbo, then basaik safe ta.
Maagin.
Yeah.
Well, Cebu City, I mean, history, mungin ang pinag-oposisyon kayo, vocal kayo, diigun mo kuwan sa north ba. But tinuod na, sir, no? Tinuod gina, na, even katumpag downgrade na to, downgrade na to sa atong quarantine classification na to.
Yeah.
Morag ang interpretation is, nawaa na si COVID, morabag something like that ba, morag it's an assurance. So morag, everything right now, sir, is still very, very fragile. And then although, you know, for the past few days, we've been experiencing success, no? But then again, when there's a little success, somehow, mupewewewipod ang complacency.
Correct, correct.
So we have to be reminded, complacency is our number one enemy.
Then atong, ang mga tagasugbo nga makabuhay, actually, di mga dog malls, kayang malls erkon, hadlok sila nga, ang erkon makatakod. So mga tos bukid sa Busay. Kay ano, ang Busay makabalighi ang mga tanong, mais, unsa pa di mga prutas. So at least they are helping the economy that way by helping the local producers.
Actually, I do deserve, I went there, ako asawa, namalit ang mga tanong.
Yeah.
But because of this COVID, daghan na kay namalit ang tanong, no? Kay they are confined naman sa ilang balay.
Correct.
Then when they saw na mga artista, sahay, ridiculous na kay mga presyo. And then, ang kaling atos ang mga taga-bukid, nga nanindang tanong, they're catching up with the price point.
Correct, correct.
Nausap ang tari pa, sir, ni Taas.
Lain manggo ng narakas bay. Even my daughter started to plant in our, that used to be just an ordinary kuwan. Karoon, gitam na na niya ang mga vegetables, na namungag mayo.
That's good, self-sufficient.
She is a cook, at the same time, we are eating the products niyang gitanong.
Diwaagin, kay safe you guyo, no?
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I also, every now and then, ngatumpok bukid, sir, I observed on how they behave. Medyo ang compliance ito minus minus, but then again, it's open magod. And then they are not, also, just like na Rizmama, it's densely populated, ang mga balay sikit-sikit dito, they are very much away from each other ba.
Yes, that's really true. And I think the social distancing has helped a lot.
And in fact, sir, for the 80 barangays in the city of Cebu, there are four barangays, mountain barangays, wagui issue on transmission from the start. We're talking here of barangay Paril, barangay Buotaop, barangay Sudlon, Sudlon Ono or Sudlon Dos Bato, and then tap-tap.
Yeah.
So these four barangays, sir, wala gay transmission. And then for the records, dagmay ang mga mountain barangays, medyo tas-tas, but they're not really inguntang a mountain because we're talking about Bakayan, naman tanahan diya, biya leson, dagko umagay ng mga resident siya. And then San Jose, and then Busay, and then mora na siya'y mga barangay sa mountain, medyo, medyo angay tutukan ba because of the incidents, but the rest, the rest, they're good.
Mostly ma-approach na na sila o gan, tresikad.
In fact, sir, there were barangay captains who've been complaining to me because when the mayor calls them for a meeting before, when they go back to their respective barangay, people will no longer approach them. Morabag sila idistan siya na sila, morabag sila gisang lang na, sir, ba. So they complain to me ba nga, how come? I mean, that is how aware the people are, even in the mountain barangays ba nga. To those nga, mabot na ganika o Cebu City, mga rin na kika, 'yung musak ka kika dito, there is a high possibility na animo ang disisi. So they are also, which is very good, which is very good, sir.
They're very aware of the problem.
Yeah.
Ang ato na lang pa, ang ato na lang pa buton is whenever the vaccine will come. And when it comes, as Paul Francis said, it should be given to the poor.
Well, ideally, but you know how it works. The first world country will buy all these first and will give them to their constituent. And will give them to their constituents, to their citizen. Ask third world, ask kita mga third world along the, 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 the kwan, the chains, sir, will come last.
Well, you know, if you look about, if you look at San Francisco today, which I saw in YouTube, you'll be surprised, mora sila third world country. Kay ano, grabe kay ilang mga immigrants nga, wala'y balay, magdawa tung 400 dollars per person, for each person living in the side book. Makaiingon lagi ka, maka, maka tanaw ka nga, why are they in the side book? Ke puro drug addicts.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
Yeah, muna na, nakaiingon ba nga, tungo sa ilang kanabitang thinking, sa ilang democratic, uh, leadership. Their liberal, liberalism has actually gone so, so far away, na mora na sila third world country. Unfortunately, uh, kwan lang, kanabitang kita dini, we're better off than them in that sense. So we'll be back with Joel Garganera after this break. Please don't go away.
That everything is being followed according to the letter. And yes, somehow, according to Joel, we only had four or three, what you call, people who were infected by COVID-19. And it's a record, in a way. Although, we cannot share it with other cities right now, but it would be nice if they followed our process.
Experience.
Yeah. And that process is really important, that we all follow the procedures, as Joel was saying, four commandments. So the four commandments is really wash your hands, social distancing, wear mask, wear facial... Kita raw mati ng alienation, gafeshil.
Gafeshil, daw.
Yeah. But, you know, it has served.
Yes, yes.
Whether you like it or not, these four commandments have really... We're not saying that the COVID has left us. We're only saying that we are finally lick the infection rate, that COVID can, ano... In short, we have helped fight COVID this way. And this fight is not yet over. So, right now, at Tengali, I would like to know, what does the city government think? Nibalik na taog, supposed to ease our lockdown, but not all businesses have returned.
Yeah. As it is right now, we're in the lowest quarantine status, which is the modified GCQ, no? And the next to that is the new normal, which is paranago. No, let us not go to that yet, no? In fact, experience also from other cities around the world, they haven't experienced positive cases for a month or two, just like what happened in Bali, when they tried to open up and then not too much procedures, no? Process that are being followed soon is skyrocket, nasan, no? Just like what happened also in Singapore before, no? So they have the circuit, short-circuit breaker, no? Now, in the influx of the construction workers and then grab yang transmission dito silang mga dorms, so it skyrocketed. So, what we did also in Cebu, we're trying to anticipate that. In fact, would you believe there are a lot of construction workers arriving, no?
Already?
All over the Philippines, they are arriving in the city. In fact, I came to know, when I talk with the Contractors Association of Cebu, when I talk with the DPWH and then the rest, no? I came to know that 90% of our construction workers are not from the city.
Yeah, they're not from here, correct.
They're not from here. And then, that is when we tried to... And then there were transmission from the construction site, not to put silang barracks and bunkers. In fact, we're able to get around almost 19 positive cases from the construction sites. So, right now, I'm also in charge of the airport and the seaport. The seaport, I was in charge of the seaport IATF since March. We're really very strict. And then, right now, in the airport, we have our booth there, sir, manned by Cebu City personnel from the tourism, from QRT and our ABC.
And Megawide has a kwan testing center?
Yes, sir. And then, for the local, for the, just the domestic and terminal one, we have our own booth there, where we process. And I meet all the... I did a Zoom meeting with all the airlines, facilitated, of course, by JMR Megawide. And then, there, sir, I told them that, you know, of the entire cities in the Philippines, we require a letter of coordination for those that are coming from the national capital region. Because as it is right now, their cases are really very high.
Correct.
Really very high, very high.
They're planning another lockdown?
Yeah. GCQ sila ro, nah?
Yeah.
GCQ sila ro. So, that's the only cities where we require a letter of coordination. And then, everything is really coordinated, and I'm thankful with the airlines. Because even before mo take off Pangilang Ruplanos, sir, I already have a copy of the manifest of those that are from Cebu City in that particular flight. So, everything runs smoothly. And for those that will be arriving from Manila, we have a mandatory swab test. All for the city, all being answered, the cost from the city and DOH. And I'll give you a background also, sir, on how things are going on in the seaport. We have a staging area at the seaport. I put up around 10 tents. Vecco was also very supportive, they provide us tents. And then, not a single passenger can just go, can just...
Dito magpadagdagan, sugbo nga, naisakit.
Oh. Not a single passenger, sir, nga mo munaog, dya sa ilang, sa barko ang ilang isakian nga, that are not being fetched by our buses. So, I do not, I strictly don't allow them to kaning munaog without being fetched by our buses. So, everything will be processed good sa atong staging area. So, we have a part there sa province, which I coordinated very well with the office of the governor. And then, we have also the part sa city. Once they arrive there, they have to sign a certificate of undertaking, that they have to undergo 14-day quarantine.
Correct.
And then, stricto ako, sir, butangan paginago, hindi libulay, prag election. Because... And then, I have everything, I have a database, a database records ano nila, picture ran nganila tanan. And then, before they go out sa staging area, sir, their barangay captain knows already their arrival, no? And then, ang katung taga Manila nga mo abot, sir, we have three choices. If their house can qualify for a quarantine, pwede.
Yeah.
Second, if they can afford to go to a pension house or hotel, they do there. And if they cannot, they cannot qualify, and then if they cannot afford, we have also our own isolation center for the LSI, which the city provide nila, no? So, everything is being addressed good, no? And then, sad to say, in spite of that, sir, in spite of that, for the month of September lang, we have around 17 LSI and Apor got positive. And most of them from Manila, no? So, we're addressing that. Because I also meet, no, together with the Department of Civil, I forgot the name of the department. I meet all the heads in charge of the different ports in the province.
Yeah, yeah.
So, akong gimit, sir, ang Tagatulad, Tagawan, Tagadanaw, Tagatabuwelan, Sambuan, and then Argao. So, I came to know then, ang tabuwelan ra, and then partly ang Argao, ang Wanuwarf and Danau are operating, the rest are closed down good. San tander, sirado good. So, I've been closely coordinating with them, sad nga. They have also to monitor the arrivals, sad, no? And then, in fact, Danau and Wanu are giving me, on a daily basis, the arrivals from Cebu City, for Cebu City and those from the province, so... So, you know, bisagunsakong panay mo, bisagunsakong panay mo ayaw ang pagda sa cities, sir. If you will not also screen the arrivals, no?
Correct.
And the different ports that I'm talking, the seaport and the airport, kualang gapon, at kawang lang atong hago.
Yeah.
So, we have really to be strict and screen the arrivals of the different LSI and Apor's, no?
Pero the most important is really to ensure, di man mo ikan, di man mo itein na limpys ba sa Carbon?
Yeah. Right now, sir, right now, because if you look at our transmission sa the IT barangays, would you believe Irmita has zero transmission? And Irmita is where Carbon is.
Irmita is thickly populated.
Believe you me, zero transmission. Yeah, yeah. So, and when we talk about Carbon market, that is one area, como dinaminito na to tanan, madto tanan, no? Dato, obre, tanan. And then, it doesn't only confine lang sa city, but it's as well on province, no? Nagkantag ma-vendors. So, what we did right now, kaning atong kita wag, sir, or kaning community surveillance. We, last week nagmeet ko, for five days, I met all the different vendors association, katung na ay mga stall owners. And then, there's a new vocabulary nga malerni mo derye. We have this permanent ambulant vendors. Ganyo, oximoro dwa, ambulant is...
Yes.
Di ba?
They will always be, cannot be permanent.
But that is one vocabulary I learned. Permanent, because at the end of the day, after selling, they vacate man sa ilang lugar. So, that's what makes them ambulant. But they are permanent on that spot.
Yeah.
They own that spot, no?
Yes, yes.
So, what we did right now, sir, karoon maayokayron, they really embrace the test that we are conducting there. Then tandem niya tong test, sir, ha? tandem ni, we have the RDT and the PCR, no? We have the RDT and the PCR. And then, it's a matter of convincing and talking to them. And when I went there, of course, together with our doctors and our city market officer and our city admin, when we talked to them, the need, why we have to be tested, no? Just really to assure lang ba, nga, wak bagida's COVID dya? Naabagida's COVID dya? So, because of the food traffic, grabik dya? So, in fact, this afternoon, I mean, tomorrow, we came to know a result, a partial result of the first day nga, atong iconduct ni siya nga, first, first in the country d'eh. First in the country d'eh, nga market, nga nag-surveillance testing. In fact, I just read some yesterday, Manila will also be following. They will also be doing that on their markets. But right now, nagdugay ni siya, sir, because tagahan manggud kayang madungo ang mga market vendors nga, ah, ugma, ugma, ugma positive ta, ilockdown ta, walang tay income, nanan.
Correct, oh.
But during the last week, sir, mona mong gibuhat, the Emergency Operations Center, together with their doctors, we communicate, we hold around six pulong-pulong, no? Although, we are...
Maminao mangguna sila, Joel. You know, when I was a market, at that time consultant, I met with Si Si Cuba.
Si Cuba, oh.
And I really, really meet with them and talk to them. And you know, maminao na sila kung naatay concerns, kasabot sila nga, ikaw ni, tabang ka nila, wak ka mag, wak ka magpakaparooning nun ba? But these people are really, what you call, sane people. They understand the issues. Labinan na 'yung COVID, nga, wak, di mabasa. At least, kasabot sila ni mo.
Ang ilahang sa mga pangutana, sir, medical and katung economic nga pangutana, umalockdown, we're also being addressed.
Correct.
So, at least, nawaa na sa ang ilahang, ang ilang kahadlok, ang ilang katahap.
Correct.
So, right now, sir, ugma, mga tuonero mo, naglinya ang mga tao na dito. And then, mind you, I've been swabbed twice, no? It's not a good feeling, ah? It's not a good feeling, it's...
Correct, oh.
You have nasal kwan, kaning check ni mo, di ba?
Sakit.
I'm telling you, di ba?
Yes.
So, dili ilalim, ha? Dili ilalim mo? But you know, kana sila, sir, duha pa good, it's a tandem.
Yeah.
It's a tandem, no? RDT. So, may bauan, ug nakay COVID, may bauan, ug nakay COVID. Ug may bauan through the RDT, ug nilabay naman ni mo ang COVID.
Yes.
Nilabay naman ang COVID, no?
Good to know, and we'll be back with Joel after this break. Please don't go away.
First song. Thank you.
The theory of decreasing responsibility explains how your life insurance needs change over time. In the early years, you may need a lot of life insurance coverage, but in the later years, you may not. In the early years, when you're younger, you don't have a lot of money, but in the later years, you'd better have money. How does this fit with your insurance needs? Today, when you're young, loss of income due to a premature death would be devastating. Your children are young, and you might have high debt and a house mortgage. Your need for insurance is highest at this time. When you get older, retirement income is needed. Your children are grown, your debts are lower, and your mortgage is paid. If you have savings, you are self-insured, diminishing your needs for insurance. That's the theory of decreasing responsibility. By having life insurance when your financial responsibilities are the greatest, you can have peace of mind, knowing your family's future is protected.
For a final set, we'll talk about, unsa may new normal tanaw ni mo, Joel. Kay, inik ka supost big, end of the year, na hapit ng Pasko, nga, kay October naman. So, kung wak pa na COVID, what you call vaccine, by December, I don't think business will return.
Well, to me, sir, we have to live with the fact that COVID will be around.
Yeah.
For... Dilil lang kay arong Pasko, but perhaps in the next Christmas, napag na COVID. So, we should learn how to live with COVID, no? Kay, if you're, you know, if magpaabot lang ta sa vaccine, and to act, normally, kung nanay vaccine, I think that's the wrong approach. We have to learn how to live with COVID. And then, whether we like it or not, si COVID na rin na skillin, sir. If you low our guards, mo low gani mong guards, then COVID will come in, no? So, we have to really maintain, sustain gini nato, no? Right now, of course, no? Ato mas ginag-iopen atong business. It's not a matter of choosing lives over livelihood. They have to coexist.
Yes.
Dilil na pwede. Because it doesn't work that the government will be providing. Mamatay po ng gobyerno, yana.
Correct.
That is why ang ato mga policy, when it comes to lockdown, we have this thing called granular lockdown. When we lock down a particular barangay or particular city, we'll see to it nga those areas lang, together with the police, the barangay, the city health department. We have to make it a point nga katuragin na apiktuhan, katu maduol, or gina'to ilockdown.
Correct.
Rest is diligin ato na mablock ang atong passage nga sa kanang mga trabaho, naimon trabaho, no? So, in the same manner po sa mga businesses po, sir, like sa government, like there was one time, na nawang ng gobyerno, lockdown na tong lampisina, but we have to do it in a segmented, granular, sad, so that they can also work, dilisal ingon iangin na tutanan.
Correct.
So, these are our approach, which is, of course, business-friendly and scientific, sad. Would you believe, sir, there are more than 17 na ato na lockdown? But most of them...
Wak, mura gudungo nga na, pero...
But most of them...
Nakoo lang numero, ha?
On their own, on their own. Ang establishment mismuna lockdown, because they anticipated na dini mayayaw. So, that's why when we come in, when we do contact tracing, when we extract the person that got the virus, you know, our establishment, our business sectors are very cooperative. Because they knew for a fact, nga, if they will not cooperate, it will just, you know, sila rga't mayigo.
Correct, oh.
The communications are very open, coordinations are very clear, no? And the person also, Attorney Jared Limkyako is in charge of the business processing and licensing. He's very effective. And then, we have very good people there, sir. We have very good people there. We have doctors like Doctor Alen Salata, who will be formulating different policies and every now and then. And then, of course, our DILG officers are... Every day, na atong city DILG officer is also helping us. Of course, ugunsaya mo mga policy, when we endorse it for the mayor, for his executive order, nga kengan lan plansado na ginasiya, because he has also the goal signal, the green signal na po sa IATF Regional Office. So, COVID will be here, no? It's not a matter of waiting for the vaccine, but we have to learn how to live in it.
Yes, that's really true. My last question to you would be, kumusta naman ang atong Cebu City Health Hospital? Kay, nauna na atang 100 million katung atong emergency nga hospital gehimo sa reclamation area? Naghagaengon, unahon ko na ang Cebu City Hospital?
Yes, to me, sir, this pandemic is medical, no? Aside from social nga issue ba? And the hospital is a medical concern, no? And then, just imagine if nahumanan na atong hospital...
Yes.
That could accommodate, what, 500 patients?
Correct, oh, yes, sayang kayo.
Sayang kayo, sayang kayo.
Correct.
As it is right now, katung 100 million was just for specific lang ang mga floors, longa mahuman na siya. But the additional budget that we are preparing right now, which also the vice mayor is very, very, very passionate about, no? And of course, the mayor, we will have the budget for the completion again, no? It will be passed before the end of the year. So, we're looking at CCCMC will be functional for the first five floors by next year. We're looking at that before the end of next year. And then, mahuman gin na siya na entire building, hopefully, the year thereafter.
But again, even if you finish it, ang problema sa ato mga hospital, last, what, January, no, December, I wrote this column, saying that tagan kayong hospital nga had to shut down their ward kay wine nurses, because tagan kayong IT nga company nga nang habli for helping our IT people paid by US standards. And then, they had to leave the hospital, kung sakop na siya, siya will do derye.
More so, during COVID, during the pandemic, sir...
Yeah.
A lot of them really, not just for survival, but for... And they have again, because they can always compare man what the government nurses are receiving.
Correct.
In fact, what the city did, we filed a resolution, kami ni Edo, that we have to augment, we have to give allowances or assistance to those... Kualang naglimit lang eh, katung ni address lang sa pandemics, sir.
mga frontliners.
Covid frontliners. And in fact, we meet the 11 hospitals, together with the mayor, the 11 administrators sa mga hospitals. Because we will be giving those that are assigned sa COVID area at 10,000 pesos each for the next three months. It started, it started September, October, and ends in November. So, that is also...
Nakoy ng tabang oh eh.
And that is also our city way of recognizing the help of our frontliners, especially the hospitals. Sa private na, sir, ang sa government, ma imo hatag, kay their resident management.
Yeah, correct, correct. Kayang private hospitals may na problema.
And as it is right now, sir, ang atong hospital na tong occupancy is really very low.
Low?
Especially the private, the private hospitals, 18%.
Low?
18%.
Wow.
So, ang sa atong government ni Sakasaka runga may 40. Ni 40 ta, kay sa Vicente Soto, sa Saint Anthony, og sa CCCMC ni Sakasaka ta. But 40, which is okay na gapon.
Mada, madara.
But the thing right now, no? Everything is still so fragile, erratic gapon, because it really depends on the movement sa tao, no? Umapabadlo ang mga tao, ug ang movement grabe, wala tay mga protocol, wala tay gubutan ang mga, on how to prevent it, magpalabing ang tao. If it spike, magani, sir, the only thing nga medyo maayaw ke arang tarong, dilit na maguol, because we are in a better position to address it, to contain it. It's still there, ang ato mga isolation center, ang atong mga, ang atong mga, contact tracer. In fact, right now, sir, around 600 contact tracers will be added sa Cebu City through the DILG.
Okay.
So, naghire tao, mga bangko. Because as it is, ang ato sa mga police po, sir, you know, they cannot stay here forever, ang ato mga Bureau of Fire na tong mga volunteers na tong sa contact tracer. In fact, I just received a letter from Bureau of Fire last month pa na, sir, nga, they want to retrieve na katung mga Bureau of Fire nga na contact trace ba. Ayaw sa, ayaw sa, not now, no? Not now. Until such time nga, ma-functional na to ang katung ihatag sa DILG, perhaps.
Tsaka tong pag-anhe ni Roy Simato Gedane, ang SAF.
Yes, sir.
That really has helped a lot.
It really helped a lot. And then, what is very, just to show how disciplined the SAF ba? There are around 156 of them, sir.
Yeah.
When they, when it was their time nga mulakaw nas, sir, we have them all swabbed, yes? Not one got the virus.
Really, ha?
That not one, that just to show you how disciplined these people ba? This special...
Ang lagot lang ako sa social media nga, dagang gatake sa SAF for the simple reason nga, kaning COVID dilit ni maaway og sundalo, og pusil. Monay ang lagi mga critics sa social media, patalka lang sulte. But actually, paranago, this SAF has really helped the city in its lockdown.
You know what, sir, they are a very big factor sa pagcontain, no? I have to salute General Ferro, Colonel Ligan. You know, when movements are restricted, that brought the cases down, no? And these are artificial.
Correct.
Kigristrik man na, gristrik man na to. So, moto ang mga transmission na to kasagaran is naras balay, no? The police, no? Motami ingon sila nga nagkuha namanta, MGCQ namanta, kuha ko na na ato mga border? No, 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 no. That's a very big no, no?
Yeah.
I always abide what General Ferro said, no? It's very, kualgini, sir, vital kayo ang atong police in the containment na to sa virus.
I totally agree, and fortunately, we run out of time. We will be asking Joel Garganera for his parting shot after this break. Please don't go away.
First song.
Thank you.
Thank you for staying with us. Let's now ask Deputy Implementor Joel Garganera for his parting shot. Please, go ahead.
First, thank you, sir, for giving me this opportunity. Ganahan ko magbalik-balik derye. By the way, to the Cebuanos in general, no? We have to fight COVID together, no? And I'm telling you, we can beat COVID together. So, we have to help each other, no? I might sound like a broken record, but I'm doing this every day. And it takes a lot of talent and skill to keep on reminding the same points every day. Please protect yourself, because by protecting yourself, you're protecting others too. So, don't forget, wear face mask. And if you go into a mall or ride a public utility vehicle, you wear a face shield. And then, maintain contact, social distancing. And then, please wash your hands every now and then, carry an alcohol in your pocket. And then, if you have no business outside, please stay at home. That's it.
Well, thank you so much, Deputy Implementor of the Task Force Agency for the Emergency Operations Center here in Cebu. And we are lucky that we have the right man to do the right thing. Because after all, Cebu got a very ugly, what you call, reputation of being the longest lockdown. But somehow, thanks to people like Joel you, I mean Joel Garganera, who really has moved heaven and earth. And he himself got even COVID and his wife. And yes, how many people know that? Very few. And yes, if you really work hard to make sure that you cannot, what you call, infect others, then you are helping the community of Cebu City. And that is what we have here with Joel Garganera. And we thank him for his very frank and honest response to this show, giving us the whole gamut of what he has done for the city of Cebu. And thank you, akompas alamat konimo from the people of Cebu, Joel. And you've heard it here and straight from the sky, and bobe tabila. Thank you and good night.